Welcome, everybody. So good to see you. I am Carla Silvestre, President of the Board, and it's my pleasure to welcome you here today to our Legislative Summit in the vibrant Richard Montgomery High School. We have a new format today. We're in a school, which makes a lot of sense because this is where the action happens. This is where all of your support gets implemented, and it's where our children learn and thrive. So we are very pleased to be here to celebrate our partnership together. And I want to thank the staff, MCTV, all the people at Richard Montgomery that helped make this event happen. So let's give them a round of applause. And without further ado, I want to introduce the Principal of Richard Montgomery, Leadership Matters. And it's so important to have great leaders leading our schools. And this principle really exemplifies what we want to have in every single school in Montgomery County Public Schools. So Alicia Deeny, Principal of Richard Montgomery High School.
Thank you so much, and welcome to Richard Montgomery High School. Yes, go Rockets! I'm very proud to be part of this community. I actually grew up in Rockville. And it's incredible to be at a school that has such a long history. You may already know this, but Richard Montgomery High School is the oldest high school in Montgomery County. It was founded in 1892. So that's 134 years of the process that you go through every year in terms of making decisions about what priorities are, right? You have 134 years of essentially legislative ancestors who have come before you. And I can't think of a better place for you to have this meeting today than a place where your decisions about priorities and funding directly impacts. And you can see that this is a place where we have a wellness center right across the hall, right? That's been a big focus for all of us in recent years. And you can see where your decisions and your priorities directly impact the lives of our students and our teachers. And it's just a great place for you to be. There's a lot happening at Richard Montgomery High School. You can see we have homecoming. If you don't know, the short term for homecoming is HOCO. Okay, just in case you're wondering about that banner up there. It's Hispanic Heritage Month. There are kids decorating lockers up in the halls. It's Spirit Week. I was wearing pajamas earlier today. So now those things may or may not be impacted by you. But thank you so much for continuing to focus on our students and on their needs. And I truly appreciate the Board of Ed. And there are so many of you here that I've gotten to know over the years in my work in education. I know how dedicated you are to the mission of our kids. So have a great night. I'll turn things back overdue, President Silvestre.
Thank you, Principal Deeny. And at this point, I would like to have my fellow Board members introduce themselves. So we'll start with Vice President Harris.
Good evening, everyone. I think I know most of you. Lynn Harris, I use she/her pronouns, and I am very proud to be an At Large member of the Board.
Good evening. Rebecca Smundrowski, District 2. Thanks for coming.
I'm going to stand so I can see everyone. Shebra Evans, District 4. So great to see you all. Looking forward to our discussion.
Good evening. Brenda Wolf, District 5.
Good evening. Julie Yang, District 3. I look forward to our conversation.
Good evening. Buenas noches. Grace Rivera, Department, District 1. Nice to see you all again. Saw some of you last night. So another late night, but thank you for everything you do.
Good evening. Sunil Sivarnas, student member of the Board. Excited to see you all here today.
Thank you. And we are using the mics because the meeting is being recorded. So again, thank you for being here. This is a partnership. We know that you are all committed to the well-being of our public school system. When schools thrive, communities thrive. All your constituents, whether they have kids in the school system or not, are interested in seeing a thriving MCPS. So that's what we are here to do, to continue our partnership with you all. And it is a new day in MCPS. We have new leadership. We have our new superintendent, who is experienced, enthusiastic, and a passionate leader. And so without further ado, I would like to introduce Dr. Taylor.
I've been told I have to stand here because I'm a bit of a roamer, and I won't be playing nice with all of the technology if I get up and move around. But hopefully, there'll be an opportunity for that later. I want to thank you for giving up part of your evening to be with us today because we're entering a pretty critical phase in our partnership together. And with that critical phase, there is a need for real collaboration. And we're hoping that this new format offers us an opportunity to renew our commitment to one another and support one another, especially during your session in Annapolis. So something that you'll hear from our Board members, something that you'll hear from MCPS, is how we want to stand shoulder to shoulder with you and help you through some of the legislative issues that you're dealing with in the education space. I want to thank you as well for your commitment to our kids. You have a couple of documents in front of you this evening. One is the Board's adopted legislative platform. And the second, our data. And these data represent some of our triumphs and some of our challenges. And we have equal measures of both. I will say that I am very optimistic when I go into classrooms because what I get a chance to see really does amaze me. And it's great that we're here at Richard Montgomery because just last week, one of the students at Richard Montgomery published in the LA Times. It was pretty fantastic. Yeah, it's pretty spectacular. And you know what she published? She published a story on another high school's counseling program and how great it was. It was really impressive stuff. And there's a lot that we can latch on to and be very proud of despite some of the challenges that we see in some of our numerical data. And what a great format for us to talk about that this evening. So I also want to just say very quickly, thank you to the council members who are joining us here this evening. And when we have an opportunity to do some introductions, I hope you say hello as well. We are so grateful for your partnership. It really is a team sport, what we're trying to accomplish together. And we can't do this work without every single person in this room working hard for kids in Montgomery County and for Maryland. So welcome to our Legislative Summit. I would like to invite all of our delegates, senators, and council members to do a very brief introduction. Now, here's what I'm going to say. Brief introduction. We've earmarked a few minutes for this because there will be lots of time for questions and for opportunities for delegates and senators to share some of your thoughts on some of these critical issues as well. If you could tell us who you are, what district you represent, and we'll pass the mic after that. And we're going to start over here. Thank you, Mr. Cram. So if you just wanted to...
Okay. I'm Delegate Lili Chi, District 15.
Thank you.
Delegate David Fraser-Udalgo, District 15.
Delegate Linda Foley, also District 15.
Delegate Jared Solomon, District 18.
Fantastic.
Delegate Lorie Charkoudian, District 20.
Mark Corman, District 16. RM class of 99.
Great credential.
Sarah Wallig, District 16.
Teresa Warman, District 16.
Cheryl Kagan, Churchill alum, K-12, District 17, Gaithersburg and Rockville.
Delegate Greg Wims, District 39.
Good evening. Ben Kramer, District 19.
Delegate Pam Queen, District 14.
Delegate Bond Stewart, District 19.
And if you want to get Councilmember Albernaz.
Hi. Councilmember Gabe Albernaz, At Large, and Walt Whitman graduate.
Andrew Friedson, Council President, Churchill. I won't say the class.
Will Jawando, At Large, Chair of the Education Committee.
Natalie Fanny Gonzalez, Councilmember, District 6, PTA Mom.
Dawn Ludke, Council, District 7.
Sidney Katz, District 3. And I was a graduate of Gaithersburg High School before Mark Corman was born.
And the alumni credentials are truly spectacular. And I was going to let it go until Gabe mentioned Whitman, that I am a BCC alum, to throw that into the mix as well. But thank you so much for being here. And we have a brief presentation, and President Silvestre will lead us through the beginning part. Thank you.
All right. So before we go into the Board's priorities for the year, and you have them in your book there, we want to cover some of the ongoing issues that are a priority for the Board. And so in order to do that, we'll have Patty Arpsbrunn come forward and tell us about the ongoing priorities of the Board that is comprised of our platform. Patty.
Thank you, President Silvestre. Just wanted to take a second to welcome everyone to what I think will be our first annual Legislative Summit. We're so glad you're all here, and we're interested, excited to tell you about our priorities and our items of interest. So as Ms. Silvestre said, the Board has identified some ongoing interests we would like you to consider throughout the legislative session. For many of you, this will not be the first time you've heard about these items. And for all of you, it certainly will not be your last. You're going to hear it a lot as the session goes on. As the session progresses, you'll see school systems across the state oppose well-intentioned bills in the name of local autonomy. And you may think, why? Well, preserving local autonomy over education is essential to the success of public schools. Local Boards of Education are well-equipped to make decisions that balance educational practices with available resources, public input, and accountability. We know it works in our county, and we know it might not work for others. You're also used to us hearing about, hear us talk about unfunded mandates a lot. It's because they have a ripple effect. They build up, and there are things we cannot do, things that matter. Adequate school funds support our children's futures, blueprint priorities, and school construction and capital projects. An area where we spend substantial funds is on the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. One of our points of pride is MCPS's leadership and blueprint implementation, and we are leading the state. But there are challenges, such as approaching deadlines that are difficult to achieve and limited direction and guidance from the state. We're committed to collaborating with you to find ways to keep moving forward and live up to the Blueprint aspirations. One of these aspirations is to enhance the status of teaching as a respected profession. Teachers, support staff, and administrators are the heart of our schools. As you're aware, recruiting and retaining high-quality educators and staff is vitally important to the success of public schools, and it's becoming exceptionally challenging. Strategies that help attract and retain high-quality, diverse public education workforce will positively impact Montgomery County students and our communities. The goal of the Blueprint and public education is to help all students succeed. And finally, one thing that really matters to all of us is the safety of our students and schools. This is becoming increasingly crucial. There are many components to school safety and security for both students and staff. We know a safe school environment cannot be achieved without addressing social and emotional health and well-being and providing resources to make advancements in these areas. Our goal is to create learning environments that support physical safety as well as personal well-being and positive social behavior. I look forward to working with all of you to further these interests and the priority issues we're about to share. Please reach out, call, text, email, and we'll work together to make this the most productive session yet.
So now we're going to go into more detail about the Board's five legislative priorities, which again, you have in your booklets there. These are challenges and opportunities for MCPS. And each priority contributes significantly to the district's mission to provide excellent education and learning for every student. They're in no particular order, and the first one is regarding the state's graduation requirements.
Six years ago, Maryland introduced new graduation requirements. I was 11. But since then, a lot has changed. A global pandemic rocked the world, and the Blueprint for Maryland's Future now impacts every aspect of public education in our state. The careers and futures students were preparing for six years ago have changed. New careers are emerging, and existing ones are being impacted by technology in ways we never would have imagined. It's really exciting. But I hear from my friends about the classes they have to take to meet graduation requirements that don't really match with what they want to do in the future. Some have figured out what they want to do, others haven't, and others want to explore their options. But they don't have time because their schedules are filled with classes they feel aren't important. If we don't feel like what we're learning is going to help us in the future or it's not engaging to us, it's hard to stay motivated. Schools should prepare us to thrive in our futures, and graduation requirements should be designed to help achieve that goal.
I think Sunil, who's here with us, has said it all. He's our student member of the Board. So we want to be innovative. We want to be forward-thinking. But we want to make sure that those requirements for graduation are aligned with where we want to go, the education that we want our students to have in the future, not the education of the past. The world has changed so much in the last six years with the pandemic, with the influx of AI and technology changing every day. We need to take a look at our graduation requirements to make sure that we're staying current, relevant for our workforce needs of our students, but also so that they can be engaged, so that they can see relevance in what they are learning and come to school every day excited to learn and be prepared for the future. I invite Dr. Taylor to introduce her next priority.
So public schools do two things that are really important. The first thing is that great teachers make fantastic memories that help develop young people into becoming adults. The second thing that public schools do is they create learning environments that are safe, welcoming, and inclusive. As they work to meet the challenges of an engaging curriculum, students need to be focused, and that school environments have a huge impact on student learning.
I don't think I have to tell you that school safety is on everyone's minds. My friends and I have grown up knowing that bad things can happen in schools. Last year, this possibility became a reality at my school. There was not only one, but two gun-related incidents. It's hard to focus when we're worried. Don't we deserve to feel safe at school? Seeing our schools invest in building safety features gives us, and the adults who work with us, peace of mind. There are a lot of schools in MCPS. Everyone who uses them needs to know we're doing all that we can to keep students, staff, and visitors safe.
School safety is a broad topic that includes mental wellness, environmental safety, a sense of belonging and community, and yes, even physical safety. Schools are the heart of every community and must remain welcoming and warm. But it is the reality of the world that we live in today that we must also integrate physical improvements to enhance our safety and security. Funds that exist to support school safety and security in different ways are critical for our success. The challenge for districts is at certain times, we may have greater need for building safety and security than others, and these upgrades can have a significant difference. While available funds are designated for other safety and security strategies, we hope that you consider earmarking critical funds to support safety in our schools. The Montgomery County Board of Education supports expanding the use of state grant monies to provide greater flexibility for districts to address their most pressing safety and security needs. President Silvestre.
Just as all students deserve safe schools, they also deserve access to opportunities and support that merits their needs.
Access to opportunity is a foundational principle of public education. Here at Montgomery County Public Schools, we are committed to removing obstacles and supporting every student as they strive to achieve their goals. For many of our families, the district covering AP test fees provides their children with the chance to take AP-level courses and possibly earn college credit. For other families in our county, this financial assistance isn't necessary. Not all our students who participate in AP courses choose to take the exam. While some blueprint requirements make sense in certain parts of the state, they may not be the best approach for us to fit our situation in Montgomery County. They're well-intentioned, but a one-size-fits-all approach doesn't always fit the situations that we're experiencing. As districts make tough budget decisions, helping those who need it is a top priority. But it is important that school systems maintain a level of flexibility that allows them to best allocate available dollars and resources to maximize our student opportunities and successes.
Yeah, so basically, right now, we pay for everyone's exams. We're asking for some flexibility. Budgets are tight. Some people don't need the assistance. Can we have some flexibility so that we can differentiate the assistance? We want access for everyone, for sure. Some people are going to need all the help to pay for these exams. Some people don't need the help. And again, if our budgets are tight, we'd like to have some flexibility so that we can differentiate that support. Therefore, the Montgomery County Board of Education is interested in exploring ways to curtail costs associated with advanced learning opportunities in a way that continues to support families with the greatest needs. Dr. Taylor.
One of the exciting and challenging parts about education is that students have many different paths to success. And we get to guide them along the way. Here in Montgomery County, we have newcomers who arrive late in their high school career, sometimes after ninth or 10th grade. And we're not able to, and they are not able to obtain their high school diploma in a traditional way.
Earning a Maryland high school diploma via GED assessments creates opportunities for students who take an alternative pathway to completing their secondary education. It can help someone get a job, serve in the military, pursue higher education, or train for a career. Many of our emerging multilingual learners are more than capable of passing all sections of the GED exam. However, they often struggle with the language arts section because it's administered only in English. Currently, Maryland is the only state that has this requirement. Learning is a continuous journey, and these individuals have the potential to make significant contributions to our community, excel in their careers, and improve their English skills as they go. GED exam accessibility is the key to unlocking opportunities for all students.
I'd like to reiterate something that was said in the video. Maryland is the only state in the United States that requires a portion of the GED exam to be taken in English. It is absolutely true that being proficient in English is an important skill for speakers of foreign languages to succeed in this country. It is also true that an individual can be successful in a job or an ongoing education while they develop these language skills. Creating a barrier for them who are otherwise able to pass the GED exam is unwarranted and something that is simply not done in other states. It prevents otherwise qualified individuals from gaining employment because of the lack of educational credentials that they have and that they are capable of achieving. To eliminate this hurdle, support learners on their path to success. The Montgomery County Board of Education supports removing the requirement that a portion of the GED exam be taken in English.
So we know that students want to learn. Students love their school. But for many of them, for some of them, there are barriers to being at school in a physical building.
Virtual learning can be a good option for students with a variety of learning needs. They may have chronic illnesses, serious injuries, or they may have a family member at home who's immunocompromised. There are many other reasons why virtual learning could be the best option for a student. Virtual learning can help all of those students to keep learning. This year, COVID-era federal grants that supported virtual programs ended while local budgets tightened. And districts across the state, including MCPS, have had to eliminate or reduce virtual learning. Families are understandably concerned and frustrated, as are those of us at the district level. A statewide need begs a statewide solution.
And while we stand by our extremely difficult decision to eliminate the district's virtual learning program due to budget constraints, we recognize the need for virtual learning offerings. Implementing virtual learning is not practical or sustainable at the district level. Therefore, the Montgomery County Board of Education urges the State Board of Education to develop a statewide virtual learning option that all Maryland public school students can access and utilize. And that is our fifth priority for tonight. Now that you've heard the five legislative priorities and the ongoing issues, we'd like to share with you questions or comments. If you have anything that you want further clarification or comments on, please raise your hand, and we'll bring the mic over to you.
Okay, thank you. Good idea. Linda Foley, District 15. My question is on the virtual academy. Can you give us an idea of other school districts, if any, in the state that have eliminated their virtual academy? And then the flip side of that, like what's out there? Like, how are other county Boards of Education dealing with this issue?
The majority of the counties in Maryland eliminated the virtual academy. Maybe one or two kept it. And I will invite Dr. Taylor because I know he comes from the state of Virginia that has had a statewide virtual academy for over 20 years. So he can tell you more about how other states and districts have handled it.
Thank you so much. And just neighboring right down the road, Frederick County was in the same boat, having to make some tough choices financially. Anne Arundel County scaled down their service quite a bit. So some of our, even our larger districts have made augmentations or eliminated their virtual program because there's some continuity challenges, and there's some fiscal challenges that are associated with that. My experience coming from Virginia for the last 25 years is their Virtual Virginia program, which has been active for over 20 years in the state, which offers à la carte courses as well as a full complement that leads to a high school diploma and even elementary courses when needed to supplement and augment some of a child's education. Those courses are taught by somebody at scale, so it's a very cost-efficient model. And there's a lot of benefit in terms of capitalizing on a larger scale versus not for economies of scale.
My question, first of all, thank you for the presentation. It was fabulous. It was really great. I appreciate it. One of the questions that I had is what I'm getting reached out to by a lot of constituents, and what I'm hearing revolves around cell phones in classrooms. So I am to the point now where I'm going to be drafting a bill. It's either a statewide bill or a local bill to address that issue, unless you tell me that the pilot that you have is going swimmingly well or if there's something else that we should consider. But I've had, for quite some time, I've had constituents talking about cell phones in classrooms and trying to find a well-balanced policy. I know it's just very harmful for the student's ability to learn, and it's harmful when it comes to the teacher's ability to teach, so.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think we have to do something to curtail cellphone use in schools. And I even talked to Principal Deeny here and see how she handles in a large school like Richard Montgomery. Yes, we are doing a pilot in eight or so schools, the all-day-away type of program. It will come for a recommendation to the Board in January, where at that point, the Board will decide to implement the recommendations for the second half of the school year. Dr. Taylor, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I think that there's a couple of issues that we're working through right now. And I'm glad you brought this up because it is something that the Board is struggling with and listening to a lot of constituents about. We do have a big concern about distraction. And one of the things that I talked about briefly was about learning environments, and how do we preserve a safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning environment? Well, that needs to be one that's free of distraction. But how do we manage that? Because there's a student component here that I think we'll hear from our student member of the Board, who might produce a counter viewpoint that we'll certainly have to consider along with, what tactic do we want to use, and what is the right approach? And so one of the things that the Board of Ed has advocated for is what may be right for Montgomery County may not be right for other parts in Maryland. for Montgomery County may not be right for other parts in Maryland, and what may be right in other parts of Maryland may not be a good fit for Montgomery County.
Oh, you're going to hold it. Okay. Thanks. Thanks for having us this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to engage and learn more about the agenda. I wanted to get into the details, if you could, on priority number one. There are a number of credits that are listed in terms of what I understand are the past requirements for graduation. So what are the changes that are envisioned in terms of what students need to, what you would like for them to take in order to graduate? What are the changes that you see? I do have a question on virtual learning, but maybe if there's an opportunity, I'll come back to that.
Dr. Taylor?
Yeah, very succinctly, I'll just say this. The ask is for the General Assembly to direct MSDE to do a study of this so that you get a clear picture of what you want Maryland graduates to have in terms of their credentials and in terms of the skills that they have when they graduate. But we know, looking at some of the requirements, that some are a little dated. And what constitutes as technology today is not what was envisioned several years ago in terms of a requirement. And making sure that the vision of the state's graduates aligns with the reality of the future world, and that's really what our target is. And we think that we can work with MSDE, and we feel like we can work with other districts to help define that. But it does need to be looked at. It does need to be reevaluated, and we need to put Maryland's graduates and Montgomery County's graduates on a different path.
Okay, Delegate Greg Wims again. I was informed by one of the board members here about the GED exam accessibility. So about two months ago, I served on the Ways and Means Committee, so I talked with our Chair, Chair Atterberry, about a month ago, just last week, with our Vice Chair, Ms. Wilkins, who's here. And so it's my intent to put together a bill to try to take care of this situation. So just wanted to let you know, any comments? That's one of my priorities.
Thank you, thank you. I think it makes so much sense, right? Some people need a GED to work. Let's not get in the way of getting that job while they acquire the language, the English language.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Delegate Janelle Wilkins, Vice Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, which is the committee that deals with K-12 education. And I wanted to start by commending the board for this format. I think between the very fancy, nice report and the video, there just could not be more clarity around the priorities. So I do appreciate the effort and the thought. And I'll start with a request of the board. I think that this is excellent. And I think that moving forward, as much communication that we can have, the point person on Legislative Affairs from the board, who I'd love to chat with after this, and ourselves, just the constant communication as we move forward, I think would really help us to be able to carry out more successfully some of the priorities of the board. And I think that we can continue to have those conversations and just increase that exponentially. But my question is around these priority issues. Is the strategy, are you identifying sponsors, or should we expect legislation on each of these? What does this look like in terms of moving forward when it comes to each of these priorities and us actually bringing them to fruition in terms of changes in legislation?
Okay, I'm going to have Patty Earthburn, who's our Legislative Coordinator, come forward to answer your question. And yes, she's our Legislative Coordinator, so I want all of you to have her on speed dial. And if you can't reach her, then of course, feel free to reach out to us.
Hi, yes. Is it on? Oh, hello. So yes, we don't have anyone in particular that we're hoping to have a sponsor for any of these bills, but we're inviting all of you to take up one of these interests. And we do intend to draft some legislation that we could provide as a starting point for the five priority issues that we identified.
Hi, Delegate Mary Sue Marie North. Thank you so much for the presentation. As you can see, I'm serving multiple jobs right now with my daughter and being here tonight. But thank you so much for the presentation. I was a little bit late, so I hope I didn't miss too much, but I'm sure my colleagues will fill me in. I was intrigued by the statewide virtual learning because I initially thought that was a good solution. So I went to the State Board of Education pretty early on in the summer, and the response was, well, the state law says each county could do their own thing. And that was pretty much like the end of the story. So I wanted to ask you, have you spoken to other stakeholders across the state to see if there's interest in this particular priority? To Delegate Wilkins' point, having the constant communication, which I know is definitely happening, is all the more important because, you know, this conversation we will continue to have, as I was thinking about it, I could have reached out to you guys and vice versa to figure out what's going on. But so my question is, have you reached out to other stakeholders in the state to see if this priority can be a reality?
Short answer is yes. And just because we can doesn't mean we should. And thinking about even mid-sized districts like Washington or smaller districts like Dorchester, their capabilities are pretty much nonexistent in this space in terms of what they could provide, and there's a real equity issue there. But even just thinking broader and statewide, even though we're a large district, there's a lot to be gained in terms of economies of scale, and there's a lot of interest. So even though there's a can, the question is, does it make more sense? Is it more cost-effective at the state level? Yes, it is. And would the quality potentially be better when we have better economies of scale? And we think that that's the case.
Two for the price of one. One, can you just tell us where enrollment at is countywide, because that's a big driver of our state formulas? And the second question is, can you talk a little about what's going on with the various sort of boundary studies, whether they're countywide or more localized ones to deal with crowding capacity issues like at Bannock Burn Elementary?
Yep. What's our September 30th enrollment?
We're just short of 160, but we'll get you an exact number. We're about flat.
And that includes pre-K or not?
I do not. Yes, it does include pre-K. Thank you.
Sometimes you see another number, and that's why I wanted to make sure that.
We'll get you the exact number.
Second question was happening with boundaries. As you know, we're opening Woodward High School soon, so we have to figure out who's going to go there. We're opening Crown High School, so we have to figure out who's going to go there. It's a huge opportunity to look at boundaries, because we're doing these two big schools, to look at boundaries in the entire western part of the county and the Down County Consortium, because the Down County Consortium is also overcrowded. So yes, we're going to figure out who's going to go to these two schools, but it will have a ripple effect. The boundary study will look at middle schools and high schools almost everywhere except the Northeast Consortium and Damascus. So when we did our boundary analysis a few years ago, that conclusion of that report was, you can make significant changes when you're looking at big swaths of land. And so this is our great opportunity to really make significant changes to improve the boundaries of our schools so that they make more sense in terms of our policy. Remember, our policy is socioeconomic diversity, school utilization, proximity, and... What's the fourth? I forget. Yes, see? Utilization. Diversity, socioeconomic diversity, proximity, and capacity. You don't want to create a boundary that's already overcrowded. So that's our policy. So when we start our boundaries studies, that's what's guiding us. We are working on an RFP, and the community engagement process will begin at the end of this school year. It will be a big deal, because you know, when you change school boundaries, you bought a house in the Wooton Cluster, and now you're zoned to Crown, people are concerned about that. So we look forward to giving you more information so that you have the facts and you are able to inform your constituents about what's actually going on and how they can engage.
Thank you. So I just wanted to, I think, echo the comments of my colleague Delegate Wilkins. I think the sooner we can sort of have the collaborative conversation, because obviously there's a lot more detail that goes into a lot of these recommendations and coalition-wise, you know, what is MAB supporting, what are other districts supporting? And I just briefly, I have two questions, but I did want to briefly touch on what Delegate Mary Sue North had mentioned. I had had some conversations with folks as well about the virtual academy. I don't think this will shock anybody in the room. I don't know that there is an appetite anytime to create sort of like an MSDE program. So the idea that I think's been kicking around, and I had mentioned to a couple of folks, is is there a district that is doing it well that could sort of build up? You know, maybe we divert the per pupil formula for every virtual student, even if from Montgomery County wants to enroll, I don't know, Howard County, or whatever district it is that does it. And then we figure out some sort of, you know, in between, maybe they come to a school once every couple of weeks in their home district or whatever it is, but some sort of economy of scale, but it's not run by MSDE, because I just don't know that there's an appetite for that. And there's a parent coalition statewide that's working on this. So be very interested to keep that conversation going. The two questions I have, one, I am going to be putting in a bill that, and I know I've worked with some of you on this before, is we did it in 2021, that would essentially create a mandatory FAFSA requirement. And so we'd be curious, I know, worked with a couple of board members, and obviously it was before you got here, but, you know, the whole FAFSA fiasco, I think there's a lot of blame to go around at every level, frankly. But how we fix that going forward so we don't have the sort of drops that we had the year before, we'd be curious to hear the thoughts on what the district is doing now. And then more broadly, I know this was a big topic at our last legislative conversation around what the district is doing on anti-hate and antisemitism. And I know we did training for principals. We'd really love to get an update and even just sort of a rundown. I know we updated our standards to include Holocaust education, but what does that actually look like in the classroom? What are the very concrete things that the school district is doing in response to the rise in hate across the board?
So thank you for really raising the awareness of the FAFSA issue last year and urging Dr. Felder, I think it was, that you worked with, to work with our counselors to really ramp up our numbers. I think they were okay, some schools better than others, but I think your advocacy really helped put some fire where it needed to be and get our FAFSA numbers to a better place. So your question is, what are we doing around the FAFSA this year?
Yeah, what does it look like so we don't get into a place, and again, we were better than a lot of other districts in the state, but how do we proactively address that?
Okay. I'm not exactly familiar with what's happening with our FAFSA work this year. Dr. Taylor, do you have anything additional?
Yeah, it's probably not the pot that is overboiling the most at the moment, but that being said, it's about that time of year where our seniors will be applying to colleges and having some support for that space. I might have to get back to you with a little bit more of a thorough answer. I think you captured it really well in saying that it was a failure at every level. Even federally, it presented some really significant challenges. And if you are a parent trying to navigate the new easy FAFSA, what a nightmare. And so I think for us, whatever our solutions look like, they need to be customer service-oriented. The only pushback that we would offer is please understand that any change in that space is not a zero-cost change, and that there might be an unfunded kind of mandate component tied to any change in expectations. And so we're a little sensitive to that because our school counselors and school administrators who bear the brunt of some of that work work very hard as it is, and an added layer of expectations without the financing behind it is a really significant challenge.
Are you thinking FAFSA, MiFSA?
Yeah, I mean, basically, the similar bill that we did in 2001, I mean, I don't want to monopolize the conversation on it. What we saw was really successful in schools, particularly in MCPS, was sort of an all-hands-on-deck approach that, you know, and as a former high school teacher who taught seniors, like, engaging multiple partners, and I know it is an added burden, but it's something, frankly, we owe it to our students, all of us do. So we can talk more about that. And then the anti-hate piece was the other question.
Yeah, a couple of really important things that we've been focused on this year is, one, we are looking at how we might strata categorize some of the infractions that have happened so that not everything goes to the police. And that has certainly helped in terms of some management issues when things are difficult to work through and have an impact, but they're not campus-wide impact. And that has certainly helped in terms of resources and management. Another big component to this is having some clarity around definitions and expectations. Something that we're pretty particularly happy with right now is that we had a conversation with principals last week, talking about the upcoming election, talking about the anniversary of October 7th, troubleshooting some potential issues that we know are likely to happen. We shared some resources with the entire staff, which is something a little bit new for us, that we've kind of staged our communications with leaders, staff. And then on Friday of last week, we shared some resources with our community. So slightly different messages for the audience, but a lot of commonality between communicating our expectations with clarity, providing some support and some resources, and also what the follow-up looks like every day. And I want to give a lot of credit to our school leaders who have managed a handful of really challenging and difficult circumstances this year, and they've done it with grace. They've done it with precision, and they're there to help kids learn from their mistakes, but also not accepting of any antisemitic or really any hate bias incident for any student. We want to make sure that our kids are safe, welcome, and included, and proud of where they come from, who they are, and what their background is.
When will the principals be training the staff? Or does that happen already?
The question is, when would the principals be training the staff?
Yeah, ongoing.
Done. I don't mean to press you, but this was, again, a big topic of conversation last year and before you got here. But I think it was obviously very important to many of us. We passed a state bill, a timeline or an understanding, again. And to MCPS's credit, particularly adding the Holocaust pieces to the curriculum, I think we were out in front of most of the districts in the state. It was really wonderful. But just, again, seeing like very concrete, and I know if you can't answer it now, that's totally fine, but just a follow-up of like, this is what this looks like in the actual day-to-day, and this is the timeline of when we expect. We can at least say the first rounds of training have been done, or I think so also we can help you share that with our constituents.
Hi, Delegate Queen. I have a question based on priority one, and I'm coming from the role that I play as a professor in higher ed. So I understand your requirements, that we need to meet various state requirements in terms of graduation credits. We had the same issue in higher ed. We have a problem. I work in the County and Finance Department, and we have a problem now with our students with CPA exams, not having the appropriate coursework to be able to sit for the exam. So I get the need to have some sort of review. My question, though, is on the other side, I see a lot of students who come from Maryland schools who have very inadequate math and technology skills. And so my question would be, is this, do you envision that this review would, one, include higher ed as part of it? And do you have some place where some school or some district that has done this well?
My gosh, yes, that would be great. I think our higher ed partners have to be a part of the equation in terms of understanding expectations. I think our workforce also needs to be a place that we go to in understanding some of their expectations, and then kind of backward mapping what that would look like. Mathematics is a great example, making sure that our kids have a certain level of proficiency and that they are college and career-ready, and defining what that looks like. And maybe it's not a discrete course, or maybe it's not a course title, but it's certain skills and certain dispositions that we want to make sure that our students have. It's really a great opportunity to redefine what we want a Maryland graduate to look like and what kind of skills they should have when they graduate. And that's really, I think, at the crux of what we're trying to get at. The perfect language for this bill would even have that expectation that every five or seven years or so, that this is something that's looked at, and it's not a one-off assessment of what our graduates and their requirements look like, but how do we in perpetuity be flexible enough to adapt to a changing world? Well, schools, I think, are all bound by what MSDE is.
States where this may be happening.
Absolutely. Across the country, people are reevaluating. Across the country, people are reevaluating their graduation requirements. Our neighbors to the south, across the Potomac, about 15 years ago, added an economics and personal finance component to their graduation requirements, so that took the place of an elective. It was a hard decision. It was something that their general assembly fought for a couple of years over before they finally adopted it. But the outcomes of that is that you literally have 15 years or a generation of kids that have a different understanding of things like credit card debt, and how student loans work, and how checking and capital markets work, and it's a different dynamic as a result.
College, unfortunately.
Sylvester?
Cheryl Kagan, Gaithersburg and Rockville. I wonder how MCPS might be able to enhance their efforts to spread the word about legislative scholarship money. Every one of the 32 Montgomery and plus our Howard County, Howard-Mongomery colleagues has access to a lot of money that we can give to our constituents. Now, many of us, I think there are almost as many different versions of our programs as there are legislators, but we were just given a bunch more money. I was just given another like $120,000 to give to my constituents. Yes, Delegate, you got some more, too. So, MHEC, the Maryland Higher Education Commission, just went through their records and just reallocated. So we all do it differently. The deadlines are, I would venture to guess, are all different. The process is different, but the challenge is that the students who need the money the most aren't hearing about it in a timely way. I want to find those folks and give them money to support their higher education so that they don't graduate with a bunch more student debt than they need to. Would love to hear your ideas either now, any of you, or down the road, but please help us help them.
We'd love to play matchmaker. That's fantastic. We're so excited. What a great comment. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you know, we have our communications director here, so he can definitely help us spread the word with the wider community, with our partner agencies that work with students in our schools, helping them with the college-going process, as well as the staff in our schools. Janelle?
Thank you so much. So after I asked my first question, I was looking through the data here, which thank you so much for doing this by district. That helps a lot. I was just noticing the numbers on chronic absenteeism. That jumped out to me very, very heavily, and I don't think that is part of the legislative platform, but we know that if our students are not in the schools, that none of this works in terms of the priorities that have been outlined. So I wanted to get a sense of how we're addressing chronic absenteeism, and if you can make sure to define it so that we all understand what that means. But the numbers are really high here, as I'm looking at some of the data that you included. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. If those kids are not in school, they don't benefit from anything that we have to offer for them. And I have heard Dr. Taylor talk, the issue in the elementary schools is different than secondary, because in the elementary schools, mom and dad and guardians are not getting you to school, whereas in the secondary, you're finding ways to skip class, or you find it boring and not engaging, so you don't want to go. I'd say it is related to our graduation requirements, because we do want the classes to be relevant to the majority of our students in MCPS. So, and also, sorry, I lost my train of thought, but I'll let Dr. Taylor talk more about what we're doing to address chronic absenteeism.
President Sylvester is spot on, and as bad as the secondary numbers look, that is not the group that we're worried about. And there's an old saying in high school education that no one is absent on game day, because if you're absent on game day, you can't play. And every parent of anyone who's played sports knows that. And in middle school, no one's absent on dance day, because if you're absent on dance day, you don't go to the middle school dance, and that's kind of how that works. And so those are extracurricular tie-ins, but it's like finding reasons and finding opportunities for students to be engaged where they want to be at school, where they feel like they have to be at school. At the secondary level, that is a problem that we can solve. We absolutely can solve that. We have a little bit of a challenge at the elementary level, because just like Carla had said, we don't control how the kids get there when they're not feeling well, and if they get there when they're not feeling well, because we trained them a few years ago, if you're sick, stay home. And nowadays, the question is, well, how sick? Do you have a 99 fever or 100 fever? And are you throwing up? You know, it gets a little dicey, but the default now for a lot of our parents is to default to the side of safety, which is great in one sense, but their kids are missing in education. They are missing out, and we define chronic absenteeism, how the state defines chronic absenteeism, which is 10% or more, so that's two days a month. When you think about it, that's a lot. So even though our average daily attendance might be in the 90s in many of our schools, we have a high percentage of kids who are missing 10% or more of class time. That is pretty significant and a little scary, because they are missing over their elementary career, in many cases, a marking periods' worth of content, and that only adds to teacher workloads, it only adds to the student workload, and it does have an impact on academic performance. So we have a couple of communication challenges. The first communication challenge is, we need to make school great. We really do. And it requires an investment to make school amazing, really engaging, and a place where students want to be at the secondary level. We have a communication challenge at the elementary level in making sure parents understand some of the ramification of some of the decision-making, and also the importance of attendance and why it matters. So we have some work to do in that space. It's maybe not something that we can legislate our way out of, per se, but providing some support and acknowledging that this remains to be a challenge since the pandemic.
Thank you. I was going to say, if somebody else had a question. Just on the data piece, could you talk a little bit about the evidence of learning standards and how closely that aligns to the state proficiency standards? Because obviously, there's two sets of data in here. We have our evidence of learning and then the state proficiency levels.
So the state proficiency data is part of the evidence of learning. The evidence of learning is multiple metrics. Admittedly, this is incredibly confusing, and it is incredibly confusing for our parents and for our students as well, because it's a bit of a moving target in terms of what we're aiming at, and the overlap is not as consistent as we'd like it to be. This is a great opportunity for us, too, because there are some alignment issues that can be corrected, and that will have almost an immediate impact on our MCAT performance.
So state is point in time, but did they acquire the standards that they were supposed to? And evidence of learning is report cards, district measures, and external measures, which tells you a bigger picture, yeah.
I had a question around achievement, both for reading and for math. I noticed it's not one of the priorities, so I just wondered if you could speak a little bit to what the school system has in mind to try to address both reading competency and math competency, specifically also for black and brown kids, because I don't know if you heard from the coalition about potentially having an alarm sort of system at third grade that triggers a warning to flag students who need additional help, because that is such a critical grade, at third grade is. So I just wondered if you can speak to that and sort of what you have in play to address the fundamentals of school, really.
What you heard today is our priorities for the statewide issues, but the board priorities are increasing math and literacy, recruiting and retaining our workforce, safety and well-being for our students, and this new topic of making our graduation requirements relevant to today's reality. So that has been the board's priorities for at least the last four years. And I will turn it to Dr. Taylor to tell us what he's doing about increasing math and literacy.
We are a lot further ahead on the literacy space than we are on the mathematics space. And we are working with the black and brown coalition. We have identified a handful of pilot schools to take a look at an early warning system and what that looks like. And I got to tell you, there's a great point to that, which is like, this is incredibly confusing stuff. And when a parent gets a stack of dozen pieces of paper in nine-point font trying to explain a scaled statistical analysis of whether or not their kid is growing or not, they really just want to know, is this working or is this not working? And so finding some clarity in how we communicate with parents is a great byproduct that we're hoping to come from some of this. On the instruction side, in particular in literacy, we have a new curriculum that we've adopted. It's aligned to the science of reading. It is very much in line with the literacy plan that the state is discussing at the state board level. We think that this is a huge step in the right direction. Perfect? No. A lot of opportunities for us to tweak and make some adjustments? Absolutely, especially for students with disabilities and how we scaffold some of that support, and some of our EML students in terms of making sure that they have language proficiency support. But is it a giant step in the right direction? Yes. Have we trained all of our elementary literacy teachers? Absolutely. So we are definitely moving in the right direction in terms of literacy. On the math side, a little bit slower going, to be honest. And I got to tell you, there's some room for improvement in that space, but how we scope and sequence and make sure that our kids are performing well, particularly in computation, has been a hurdle for us. And making sure that we've got the strategies to address computation, it's a challenge. Numeracy, gotten a lot better in a short period of time. Computation, not so much.
Thank you. I just wanted to chime in at this point, and I think there's a three, this is, thank you for the board for doing this, for the state folks, and having the council here as participants. You know, as Chair of the committee, I think as I'm sitting here, to the last couple of questions in particular, obviously, ENC Committee is working real hard, along with other colleagues on the council, to dig into each of the issues that you guys are talking about, and I'm going to make sure that we do a better job of getting you, when we're talking about these things, so you can watch or have your staff tune in, getting you the staff reports on the issues. For example, I think it was Delegate Wilkins talked about attendance. When you look at why are students not achieving in math and literacy, there's a set, there's some things that we know contribute to that. Attendance at the top of the list, mental health, you know, go down the list of issues. And so what we've been doing in the committee is digging into each of those topics, along with the board, so that there can be collaborative understanding of what the strategies are, what the approaches are, timelines, you know, things like that, that it's easier for us to dig in, because we meet with MCPS more frequently. And I want to, I'll make sure that we loop you in. I will say on the attendance, for example, as an example of that, is like the PCCs, the Parent-Community Coordinators, who, for some kids who are absent, we need to know why, right? It's not just that they're sick, there's something going on at home, and that takes bodies, people, expertise, time to go into kids' homes. There are not enough of those, similar to counselors with mental health, the ratios are high, right? If we're going to try to make, if mental health and attendance, let's just take those two, are in the top three of why our kids aren't achieving where we know they can achieve, if you can remove those barriers, but we have high ratios and not enough people to get in and address those issues, that's an issue, right? So I think we just all need to work together on those types of issues. Hope that helps, Dr. Taylor.
I think Delegate Moon.
Thank you. So I just wanted to follow up on something Chair Corman was asking about, and I'm flipping through your legislative asks of the year and noting that you're broadly against state intervention and requirements on local systems. I totally get that, but I guess, having sat through the last boundary discussions and regarding his question about boundaries, I have to ask, wouldn't it be helpful, perhaps on this question, for there to be some state intervention, where we are, in fact, insisting that local school systems use the seats that they have available to them before coming to the state for additional capital dollars for expansion? I mean, this conversation's happening in many counties at the moment, and we're heading towards pinched dollars, you have system preservation needs, and so shouldn't we, at the state level, be doing more to force this issue? Wouldn't it be helpful, in fact, to local politics?
Yes and no. I'm sure that on some level, it absolutely could be helpful. I will say, be prepared to be riddled with the challenges that being on the Board of Education occur when there's a boundary study, because then the forum for complaints about the boundary study then shift to that particular policy. There's also some really logical stuff, too, that needs to be considered, that oftentimes doesn't get considered when you take, you've got, you know, 50 vacant seats, and it's like, oh, how do we adjust these 50 vacant seats? Well, you may have the life cycle of the neighborhoods that surround them, that may be informing a 10-year projection, a five-year projection, and a one-year projection differently. That should probably be considered, and it should probably be considered by a locality. You also have the consideration of natural geographic boundaries. Does it make sense to cross 270? If this school zone butts up to 270, does it make sense for it to cross 270? Does it make sense for it to cross 355? Does it make sense for it to go over this particular bridge? Sometimes yes, sometimes no. Sometimes you don't have a choice, because it just is what it is in terms of your abilities. But making sure that the board has some autonomy to make some of those decisions, if you wanted to riddle that bill with caveats that allowed for some fail safes for the board, to make some discretion, I think that that would help, and I think that it would also make sense. What I would be concerned about is being trapped into a window of time where a numerical distribution of seats meets today's burden, but doesn't satisfy tomorrow's burden in a meaningful way that also aligns with the board's aspirations and policy.
Thank you. For number two, priority number two, funding for safety upgrades in schools, one of the things that I guess is part of this, but it's not in the policy piece as much, is can you talk a little bit about the amount of, my understanding is that violence in the schools, in Montgomery County Public Schools, is going down over the last couple of years, which is good to hear, but can you talk about what policies or procedures you're putting in place to bring those numbers down and what those numbers look like? Again, constituents talking to me, significant amount of fighting in the schools. Also, that part about cell phones, significant amount of fighting that we know about, because so many kids are whipping out their cell phones to film it and then posting it on Instagram. And I understand it's on the downward slide, but if there's some information you can give on that, I would appreciate it, and how it may tie into priority number two.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for that question, and I should have led with this. We've had a great start to the school year. We really have. We've had a fantastic start to the school year, and one of the indicators of that fantastic start to the school year, just comparing this year to last year, is that we have fewer students at this point in the year that have been identified as chronically absent. That's good. We've had fewer physical altercations that have been reported countywide and in individual schools. That's good. We've had fewer critical incidents that have been reported last year to this year. That's great. And we've had fewer suspensions from this year to last year. Now, all of that in mind, how we maintain the momentum moving forward is going to be critically important. I think that the principals have done an exceptional job of communicating their expectations upfront and laying the groundwork for supporting those expectations by following through. That's a delicate balance. It is all dependent on the building-level leadership and whether or not they get the support centrally to do the things that they need to do to maintain those expectations over time. But so far, so good in that space. There's two strategies that I think, in general, will help us in the long run and will have a significant impact on how we manage when students make bad choices, and that's what they do. They do that in schools, that's not new. How we react to those bad choices and the kind of support that we put in play does matter. The first thing is making sure that we have annually reviewed safety plans in all of our schools. Making sure that they are up to date and making sure that they are practicing those safety plans with fidelity needs to be a higher priority for us, and it is this year. safety plans with fidelity, needs to be a higher priority for us, and it is this year, and very proud of that. The second thing is having consistent expectations between the school buildings. This Board of Ed that hired me, they were crystal clear when they hired me, is that they wanted to see less variance between the schools in terms of expectations and in terms of execution, and so they've given me that mandate to make sure that we have less variance between each school in terms of what's expected and what the follow-through is with those expectations, and so we're working on that. And my compliments to really the school staff, the educators, the support staff, and the principals, that have really kind of locked arms and said, this is the year, we're going to make it right. And so they've gotten off to a great start. But we do need to maintain that, and we need to put the support in place for that to happen. So clear expectations, safety plans followed with fidelity, consistency between the schools.
This is not one of your priorities, but last year, we got several calls from store owners, like Giants, Safeway, et cetera, about theft during lunch breaks, and they send the thousands of dollars on a monthly basis. I'm talking about the Hoots County. This year, Linda Foley is the chair, and I'm the vice chair of the Economic Development Committee, so I was going to go back and talk to those. So the question is, is their consideration on the table, maybe have in-school lunch for high schools, at least up to 11th grade? Because it seems like the ninth and 10th graders are the ones that the store owners are saying, that are actually stealing every day when they get out. So just want to know if there's a comment on that, or something to think about.
Gosh, I would love to meet a ninth grader who makes some good decisions. I don't think that, I don't think they got it in them. No, and in fairness to them, it's probably not the thing that we're focused on the most. I think it's always a consideration. Our safety and security team and our school team sometimes get nervous when our kids go off-campus. As the former MCPS alums in the room will tell you, it is a treasured, time-honored tradition to have off-campus lunch, and something that a lot of people value, but we do have to weigh it against the safety needs. So I don't think that there's a strong indication, one way or another. I will tell you that not all of our school facilities are built to accommodate the capacity needs for an on-campus lunch for all students. So there are some physical constraints that play into this too. I'm maybe not proud of this, but I didn't realize until my 12th grade year in high school that BCC even had a cafeteria. So, you know, that's a twist for some of our students. They're like, what's this big room here for? So there are some adjustments that I think some of our kids would, even the well-intentioned kids, it's a difficult balance that we've got to figure out logistically, not just from a safety standpoint, because it may even cause a safe, here's what we don't want to do. We don't want to cause a safety problem by fixing a safety problem, if that makes any sense.
All right, well, I did want to recognize, we didn't recognize everyone on this side of the table here, but we have representatives from the county executive's office, and Larian Sales's office, so thank you for being here, apologies for not recognizing you, but thank you for coming and sticking with us through the end of the program. It was a pleasure hosting you tonight. I hope that we can continue the conversation. Please feel free to reach out, we'll try to give you as much as information as we can so that you have the facts, and then we can work together effectively in this session. So thank you for coming, have a good night, and drive safely.